Okay. Hello, I am calling the Monday, November 25th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting to Order here at 6:30 PM. Tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and online. Members of the public may attend in person in the council chambers, or they may also watch this meeting online at BurnsvilleMN.gov/meetings. That's the city website, BurnsvilleMN.gov. You can also view us on Comcast Channel 16 or Channel 859. The public can join in on Zoom by going to zoom.us/join, and more information is available on our meetings webpage and in the agenda. And really quick, I want to thank, I guess I want to thank Jay for shortening the introduction. Our first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda from commissioners? None? Any changes from staff? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. So moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item number two is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, October 14th, 2024. Any changes to the minutes from commissioners? Any change to the minutes from staff?
Nope.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the minutes from our last meeting.
So moved.
So moved. And seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are adopted. Item number three, this is a public hearing. This is the application of International Outreach Church for a conditional use permit for religious assembly use for Unity Movement Church at 12345 Portland Avenue South. Presenting Ms. Garros, City Planner. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioners. We do have a use that is proposed inside the current office building. Building was actually constructed in 1985 as an office warehouse, and it's pretty much been used for that. However, there have been a couple of different churches that have used it for offices only. The applicant would like to have actually religious assembly use there, and that does require a conditional use permit in the B3 general business zoning district, so that is why we're here this evening. As you can see on the left, the subject site and the budding properties are all zoned B3, no planned unit developments, which is amazing. I think this is the first time in 18-plus years that I haven't seen a PUD out of the screen. So there we go. We do have a residential, single-family residential neighborhood directly to the south of the subject site, and then on the right-hand side of the screen is just an aerial photo of the property. Just wanted to call attention for the commissioners, a couple of things. Portland Avenue South and Travelers Trail East are both local streets. Neither has got, there is no on-street parking on either of those. There are sidewalks that are located on both the west and the south side of the subject site, and then internally, there are walkways internal to the site as well. As far as the site plan, nothing is proposed in terms of changes on the outside of the building or within the parking lot, with the exception that they are going to be designating two additional stalls as handicap accessible stalls, but other than that, there are no other improvements that are proposed outside. The existing site has 96 parking stalls, and there is also a bus stop for Minnesota Valley Transit Authority on Travelers Trail near the southwest corner of the site. In terms of the uses, the applicant has identified in color the different uses for the building that are proposed. The kind of tan color are the offices. Light blue are the assembly space, and on this drawing, you can see in the south right-hand corner is where the new sanctuary is proposed. That site shows about 140 seats as identified there. And then there is a small area that's identified as mercantile, which they have a coffee shop in the building that's existing, and then storage is kind of the rose or pinkish color, if you will, on here. So total square footage on the first floor, 14,100 plus square feet, and the assembly space proposed is 8,262. And I just want to call your attention to page two of the planning report. I did have the wrong calculation in there. In the third paragraph down, I indicated that the religious assembly space is 2,945 square feet. It should be 8,262. In terms of the sanctuary, this is just a larger site, and they have, they're proposing to have a platform very similar to other church facilities that we've reviewed over the years. And then on the upper level, the only assembly space is a small area, little over 600 square feet, that's proposed for a music room, and then otherwise, there is existing storage, and all of the other uses will be primarily office. In terms of a conditional use permit, what that means is that the use is considered generally permitted, but there may be impacts to budding properties or the neighborhood streets, et cetera, that need a special look at that, and that's the reason for the public hearing this evening. In terms of the occupancy for all of the uses, the way that the ordinance is set up is that you take one of two things. Either you can apply the parking schedule, or you look at total occupancy of the building, and you take whichever is greater. And in this case, it's the total occupancy of the building, so that generates a parking demand for a total of 288 spaces. In terms of, the applicant broke down also by color on some of the other pages that were included with the background report. Weekends are their largest assembly use, requiring 279 parking spaces. Monday through Friday nights, so weekday nights, 270 spaces, and actually, Monday through Fridays during the day, the assembly uses are not going to be used, so there are only 33 parking stalls that are required. In terms of the overall site, as I indicated, they have 96 stalls, which, based on the total occupancy requirement of the ordinance, they're short 192 stalls. In taking a look at the overall area, there is another church, which is currently Cornerstone Community Church, that is located to the building to the west of the subject site across Portland Avenue. And that one actually in 2017 was Sovereign Grace Church, very large church, and they had deeds, deed restrictions applied to both the lot to the north, and then also to be able to use the 90, I think 94, 96 parking stalls on the subject site. I think the parking lot was, on the subject site was painted a little bit differently. And those deed restrictions are still on file, so one of the things we have identified for the applicant is that they'll need to work with now Cornerstone Community Church to make sure that they have enough parking spaces and that there's not a need to use any of the spaces on the subject site. And then in addition to that, the applicant will need to work with other property owners within 400 feet of their site to attain the additional 192 parking stalls that are The application has been sent out to property owners within 350 feet. We did not receive any feedback or any issues raised on the application. The recommendation from staff is that prior to issuing the building permit, the plans either need to be modified to reduce the occupancy so it can meet the existing parking on the site, or they need to find the additional parking stalls and provide a copy of recorded deeds on all properties that would be affected, showing where those additional parking spaces will be located. And then the last one is that property owner also provide proof that the deed restrictions are filed on the lots, and that there are not any existing deed restrictions that would prohibit the use of those parking stalls. So with that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Any commissioner questions for staff before we open the public hearing?
Is there enough space in the buildings to the north of them to get 288 stalls?
There, I don't know the total number, but they have, they actually have parking options as well, and that's something that both, they would need to show for both churches, that there is enough parking off-site for their parking demand. The Cornerstone Church actually has the option of three different parking areas that they could potentially use on the south. Whoops, oh, sorry about that.
But in the buildings to the north, which would be the only other option, not to the north of Cornerstone, but to the north of the subject site?
Yes.
Are there enough spaces in those?
Yes, there would be, yep, for a combination or across the street.
Because it's residential across from the subject site, correct?
That's correct, yep. But they would, within 400 feet is the property at 12,400 to the southwest. There are quite a large number of parking stalls within that facility that would be available, and then also within 400 feet, they have the lot to the north and kind of this lot to the northeast as options.
Commissioner John.
So you said if, if they weren't able to meet it, they would have to reduce the occupancy, would that mean?
Yes.
Shrinking the sanctuary or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Or another type of modification to the, to the facility to reduce that. And all of the areas in light blue are currently identified for assembly uses.
So you could reduce the assembly space without necessarily reducing the size of the main, the main room?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Another option also would be that the subject site has about 44% of the site is green space currently. The requirement is 25%, so there would be some options to be able to add parking to the site as well. And there's actually enough depth between the building and the existing parking areas or parking to the south where they could put a drive aisle in and have, excuse me, parking on two sides.
I have a question. So between the two church uses, there's about a, over 700, a need for over 700 cars, and between the adjacent commercials buildings, there is, there is enough space for the two?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. I'm glad to hear that. It's a good start. Any other questions from Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Hamilton?
Are there any conflicts about parking places between what Cornerstone is using now and what the subject site wants to use, where Cornerstone is using some of those other spaces that the subject site would need?
Most of the parking that Cornerstone has is really located on this site here. The one thing that we do not have and that will need to be provided before this permit is issued is the calculations that we have for parking are based on the Sovereign Grace Church application from 2017, so we will actually need to get some additional information here, and they will need to show again that they have enough parking availability when you remove these 96 stalls, and that then the subject site has enough parking as well.
Because the subject site has been promised to Cornerstone?
Yes, it was actually, it was, the deed is set up to Grace Church or its, I lost the word.
Successors.
Successors. So yes.
Go ahead, yes.
So there's, they're not buying the building, so there's no issue with property tax being lost?
For the, for Cornerstone Community Church?
No, for.
I believe, I, I don't know in terms of taxes. I think that with that, you know, with the assembly use primarily, there is possibility that this could become not taxable property.
They're not buying the property right now, they're just leasing it?
I will let the applicant kind of address that.
The property has been purchased.
It has been purchased, okay.
Okay, seeing, oh, Commissioner Hamilton, no worries.
Is there between Portland and Travelers Trail, is there on-street parking or not?
No, there is not.
Is the intersection of Travelers Trail and Portland, is, is it just a stop sign or is there any type of traffic signal or just?
There is not a traffic signal. I believe that there is a stop sign. I believe Travelers Trail is the through street.
Okay. It's a four-way stop.
Yeah.
Oh, is it a four, okay, thank you. Okay, I knew for sure it was at least two, but four-way stop, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further questions, we'll open up the floor for our public hearing here at 6:47. So if there's anybody in the council chamber that would like to speak to this matter, you're welcome to approach the podium, and please, if you do so, please state your name and address, and we'll check to see if there's anybody on Zoom. Okay, nobody's on Zoom. And nobody's coming to the podium, so we'll close the public hearing again at 6:47 and then open it up to discussion amongst the commissioners. Any, any, yes, Commissioner Timmerman?
I have questions for the applicant, if they wouldn't mind coming up, please.
Hello, I'm Dan O'Yea with the North Coast Architecture.
Representing the hub.
Okay, and the questions that I have are, it seems to me that this is the first proposal for religious assembly at this property, and from what I can tell online, this property's been used for religious assembly for quite some time. Can you explain to me the history of the building, maybe that, that detail that wasn't included in the background that we just heard?
I might have to ask Pastor Charles to speak to that. I think Deb said something about it.
I'd like to hear from them, thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Charles Karuku. My address is, official address is 116 Interlaken Road here in Burnsville, and I'm the pastor of International Outreach Church/Unity Revival Movement. And we purchased this building from Assemblies of God, Liva Varis Church by Rob Katharine. He sold it to us on June 27, 2023, and he purchased it around 2018, 2019 for his ministry headquarters. But they had a small gathering place for his team. It could hold allowed 70 to 80 people, and so this building has not only been an office building, but also warehouse and a place for training his leaders. So I think that's all the detail I have.
Okay, so you've been using this space as a religious assembly since middle of 2023?
Since around September 2023.
Okay. I'm curious, what caused you to come to this city and request the application tonight?
Well, we were in the process of application of permit, and we came, we, we contacted Dan to come and help us with the process, so Dan could be in a better position to explain all that. He is, he is pretty much our representative. I don't know how to do this thing, so.
Right, yeah.
I had to hire the guy to do the work.
Well, and I appreciate that. I just want to provide some context. The reason I ask is because, you know, this is the one opportunity for the public to understand what's going on with properties within the city, and sometimes without questions, we can't get to some of that background. And so I think that, you know, regardless of the fact that you've been there, it's great that you have come on and that you're trying to go through the correct processes, and that's what I wanted to highlight, is that, you know, you are trying to get into compliance with the zoning regulations, and I wanted to thank you for that. The fact that you've been in Burnsville successfully for over a year now, I think is fantastic, and I wish you the best of luck. So thank you for answering my questions, and that's why I ask them.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner John.
Yeah, so do you guys feel like you would have a problem getting the necessary parking settled?
It would take some effort, but we're up for the task.
Yeah. And in the past, have you had that many parishioners that come into the?
The occupancies are based on the max. We worked with the city, and the city helped us to see what the maximums were, because that was the situation we were in. So we knew that, since I got involved, we, right away, I said, you know, parking will be an issue. We need to bring this to permit with a full ledger of bringing things to compliance. And so, yes, that's where we're at right now. We understand that.
Right. Well, what are your numbers now? Are you in?
We are currently running around 150 people.
Okay. I have some questions, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners for the applicant? Commissioner Anderson.
Is there overflow parking in use right now when the people are attending, or does everybody fit in the 96 spaces?
Well, currently, we all fit in the 96 spaces, and there is still a little bit left, a little bit left on the edges.
So I have a question. The, the building, as you, I understand you're going through a permitting process because you're remodeling the building to so it better fits your needs. Is the assembly space prior to remodeling the same, are you increasing the size of the main assembly space in this project, or is it as it has been?
No, in fact, what we are doing is increasing the HVAC and balancing it out so that it's also being brought to compliance. But the space, what was a warehouse space, is the same size.
Okay.
It does not have fixed seating, it's loose seating, and then the fixed objects are the stage and the sound booth.
Okay.
And again, all of those are labeled with the maximum amount of occupancy on, again, worst-case scenario, and that's what we're pursuing.
Best-case scenario too, right? I'd like to make a motion, if there's no other discussion.
Please, go ahead.
I would like to move that the Planning Commission recommended the city council approval of the conditional use permit to allow religious assembly at 12345 Portland Avenue South, subject to the conditions we've discussed in that we're in the packet.
Is there a second? There is a second.
A second.
So there's a motion, and it has been seconded. We'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
And this carries unanimously, so it'll be on the consent agenda at the, bear with me for a moment here.
December 17th.
December 17th, City Council Meeting. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is, is, this is also a public hearing. This is the application of the city of Burnsville for an amendment to City Code Title 10, Chapter 7, Section 53, and this is to regulate the zoning of adult-use cannabis businesses as permitted by Minnesota state law. And presenting will be Mr. Marosla, our Planning Manager.
All right. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This application before you tonight is a zoning code amendment for adult-use cannabis. In 2023, the state legislature legalized adult-use cannabis and related businesses. At that time, they also allowed for the creation of the office that would be overseeing cannabis, which is the Office of Cannabis Management, or OMC, to make it short tonight, was created, and they will be implementing the new ordinance or state statute and licensing. However, local governing authorities do have the ability to adopt reasonable restrictions on time, place, and manner. The way I like to explain is, place is what we're talking about tonight, time and manner, that will be handled in our Title III Business Regulations section of the code. All right, since then, the state's been working on it, the OMC was created, and in June of this year, they did release guidance for cities on what needs to be addressed in city codes. This guidance provided definitions for the new cannabis uses, distances for like buffering if cities want to do that, number of licenses that can be issued, all kinds of guidance. So at this time, we are looking at doing, only making amendments to Title 10, the zoning code. We're not making amendments to Title III at this time. We will be in the coming months. Our city clerk's office is leading that, leading that, and it's worth noting that in the Title III, that's where there'll be more restrictions similar to tobacco and liquor license approval. So that's where we'll put in there what kind of documents required to be submitted for registration. It's also worth noting too that the state will license all cannabis uses, users, businesses. The city will be registering only retail establishments. So if you get a license from the state that has a retail endorsement on there, then you have to register with the city. That will be all covered in Title III, similar to how we treat tobacco and liquor currently. So we are proposing to amend Title 10, zoning chapter or section title, Chapter 7 of that, which is our general standards, and then Section 53, which is currently our medical marijuana distribution facilities. So we're proposing to strike that and rename it adult-use cannabis. All the language will be struck as well because the new law supersedes that. The new ordinance will use language provided by the OMC to make sure we're consistent with state statute. The definition section defines all the new businesses related to cannabis. On the screen here are the proposed new definitions included in the zoning update. A lot of them are similar to existing uses currently found within the community and within the zoning code. I am going to point out two of them for conversation purposes. Uh-oh, excuse me, click on that pen again. A micro-business, that one, I learned this at the last council meeting. Impressed myself. So, micro-business, that is like a, that's an establishment that can grow, cultivate, manufacture, process, and sell all on one site. It's kind of like a brewery in terms. They can all do, it's small, smaller scale, it's about, they can cultivate up to 5,000 square feet of canopy on site. I don't know what the canopy part means, but 5,000 square feet of canopy, so a plant-growing area. Now, when you get to a mezzanine business, which is a larger of the two, that one can do the same thing, but they go up to 15,000 square feet. So when we get to the zoning section of this, the use section of the table, we'll kind of talk about where these uses are proposed to go and because of the two difference between the, between the two. A lot of the other ones are similar in our code. We'll go through them. We have cultivation in our code already, we have manufacturing in there, we have wholesale, we have retail, we have testing, research facilities, and so a lot of them are just kind of repeats of what we exist and already have existing. All right, also within the code, we do have two performance standards. Again, a lot of it's going to live in Title III with our tobacco and license, our license section, very similar to that. So, but we do have two of them. You have to be licensed by the state, one, that's a big one. Second one is, if you do have a retail endorsement, you have to be registered with the city, and that process will be laid out within Title III Business Registration of our City Code. And then all camp facilities shall be equipped with ventilation and filtration systems to reduce odor impacts on the surrounding properties. properties. The full statement says it cannot. All cannabis facilities shall be equipped with ventilation and filtration systems to prevent odors from escaping the premise along those lines. Again, the state licensing and our registration chapter will have more language on there, more standards, what is actually required here. We're trying to reinforce that ordinance, that order, standards are in place and that you have to have some kind of system. Which brings us to our current zoning. Again, we wanted the OMC, the city council, and the body previously mentioned that we wanted to do like for like when we were looking at the zoning districts. So when we wrote the code, we looked for similar existing uses, retail, medical marijuana, cultivation indoors, research, manufacturing, wholesale. And this is currently what they are permitted in the underlying zoning districts. So when we come to the proposal, proposed zoning for adult-use cannabis, we're treating cannabis retail the same, permitted in all the districts. That's just retail sales. It's not manufacturing, packaged materials that can be sold to the public. This is consistent with our current zoning. You will notice there's one industrial district where there's conditional use permit. Retail is kind of conditional use in that, in that district currently. This is where the, next to Menards, MGM Liquor, I believe, and there's also a multi-tenant building there as well. So a conditional use permit would be required in that case, just like any other retail in that district. Now, to the two new uses I talked about, a micro, micro business, again, staff, in talking to staff and the city attorney, there's so much unknown about these uses. We decided to do conditional use permits to begin with until we better understand the uses. So we did the same thing. We looked at where's retail allowed, where are our medical marijuana facilities allowed? And we decided to do the same kind of copy that, but require conditional use permits for the meantime until better, we get better understanding of what these uses actually are. And then for the mezzo businesses, let me back up though. For the micro businesses, it's very similar to our brewery uses. So we kind of copied where those are currently located within the community. And then for the mezzo, they're much larger generally. And so we want to put those in our industrial districts. Again, conditional use permit. Cannabis cultivation is indoor only. We don't allow for exterior or accessory structures or anything. Indoor only, inside a principal structure is what our city attorney advised when we were talking about that, since we only allow it indoor currently. Conditional use permit. And then the other big, not big change, is that we do the low potency hemp edible retailer. This is current with how we currently treat it. It's permitted in all zoning districts and it's going to be the same case going forward. So all current hemp businesses will have to go back and get licensed with the state again, with the OMC. And that will be our opportunity to re-license them or register them with our process as well. Like, right now, we do, the state law allows them to go into many retail places, liquor stores. Some gas stations have it, so it's kind of all our, but that's this low potency hemp. Cannabis is kind of, is a different, is different. You have to have a license. You have to have, you cannot just go in your gas station, for example. You know, there's a lot more requirements to go along with it. So again, the intent here was to put cannabis uses with other similar, similar uses within the community. As you see, the tables are very similar. However, we did put additional standards on the cannabis, micro, mezzo, and cultivator to ensure that there's conditions around odor control and other items that come up on a case-by-case basis. I just want to reiterate one more time that our Title III will be the home to the more intense regulations. Zoning is on place only. We're telling these businesses where they can locate. Our Title III business registrations will be more on your time and manner, hours, operation, security, buffering, if the council wants to go down that route. That's all in Title III. It'll be addressed in the coming months here. So before you is the recommendation on the screen. I want to say too that the city attorney has reviewed and approved this proposed language in front of us. We work very closely with our attorney on this to make sure that we're consistent with state statute. And the recommendations on the screen and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Great presentation. Questions, Commissioner Hamilton?
Is it where these businesses can operate? Is that under Title III then?
So where they can operate is in the zoning code. That's, we're telling them where they can operate. Commissioner? And then Title III will be the licensing and registration. So if the city does get an application or a license is approved by the state, they will send it to the city. The clerk's office will get that. We have 30 days to respond by state statute unless a CUP is required. CUP is required, then it's the other go through the process. We got to tell the state within 30 days it was permitted. So for example, if we get a, someone gets a cannabis retail license, they will send us their address, give us all the information required by our ordinance for registration. We will then verify that it's in permitted zoning district and they need to raise the requirements set forth here. And then also within our Title III, the supplemental documents, the security plans, all that kind of stuff. But this here in front of us tonight is solely on place, where they can locate.
Yes, what you presented, we, we've covered this in our last meeting. You kind of gave us an introduction and this is quite a bit simpler in that it's just dialed back to location only.
Correct, Chair. So when we briefly talked about this, we talked about buffers and other things. At the advice of our city attorney, he said we should put all that in our Title III because that's where it goes, because that's where we currently do tobacco and liquor. We want to treat them the same as existing uses or cannabis, the same as existing.
Awesome, thank you. Did you have a question, Commissioner?
Based on the number of licenses the state is issuing, what's the rough potential of people locating in Burnsville? How many?
So the state, it all depends on, so all the, I think there's 13 different licenses or different licenses we're issuing. There's 150 retail that they're doing. So the odds was going to retail, maybe get one or two. You know, Minneapolis-St. Paul, the bigger players probably get more. So right now, the news today, there was a, they were going to start issuing some licenses this week, but there was a court case, so they're all on hold. So we're kind of paying attention to that. But this time, our attorney is expecting licenses to start being issued by the state, probably late first quarter, if not second quarter of '25. So right now, if this is getting approved now, we can tell businesses where they can go. We can facilitate that. And then once we adopt the registration here in the next couple of months, then we can tell them the process. But right now, this kind of sets us up. Lots of cities are in the same boat, that they're approving the zoning now and then the registration a little later.
Great. Commissioner Timmerman?
Thank you, Chair. So since buffering came out of this recommendation that's in front of us today, that means that the planning commission will not have the opportunity to weigh in again on the buffering. Can you explain what the city's, I guess, heart is as far as some of the things we talked about at our last meeting? I think there was a consensus, at least informally, that we thought there should be something buffering schools and shops that sell cannabis. I'm concerned that the planning commission won't have the opportunity to review that. So I'd like to know what, what you know as far as the city council's direction on that.
Yes, that's, that is a good question. So the city council's direction at that time is they did have a, at the workshop we had in August, I believe it was August, get the date right here, their August work session, we did have a good conversation about that. And at that time, due to the number of licenses that are going to be issued and they decided not to impose any buffers at this time. However, now that we have decided to move it, not decide, but we're instructed to move it out of zoning into Title III, that we'll have to go through another process. So the clerk's office will probably re-ask that question as they're going through the process to make sure that they are firm on keeping it that way and other standards. So at this time, the guidance was no buffers now, but now that we have to go through a separate process in Title III where that's going to live, there's an opportunity for that topic to come up again.
Okay. I just think as an advisory body, it's important that the council reviews the last meeting where we discussed this because that won't clearly be in the vote that we're taking tonight.
Other questions? Commissioner John, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Hamilton?
I'd also like to, very what Commissioner Anderson said, that since we had a rather robust conversation on the buffer, that the council would take into consideration the concerns that we had regarding around schools and other facilities.
Thank you. So this, this will have a public hearing. If there are no further questions from commissioners, I will open up the public hearing here at 7:10 PM. So if there's anybody in the council chamber that would like to speak to this matter, you're welcome to approach the podium and please state your name and address.
I didn't sign up. Can I still?
Sure, yeah. Well, yep, just state your name and address and?
My name's Andrew Maxwell. I'm from Shakopee, Minnesota, actually. I'm actually, Minnesota, just to introduce myself, I've lived here in Minnesota since I was 15. I was a military kid. We moved around everywhere, ended up settling here. I just retired from the Minnesota National Guard after 20 years of service and therefore I qualified for the social equity for the cannabis. I actually, they did have some licenses, pre approvals that they gave out. And my business was, I was going to think of doing a delivery only, non-storefront, just delivery only cannabis delivery system. That's why I kind of wanted to, I've been going to a lot of these meetings and it seems like a lot of people haven't really addressed that, like, or I just want to say maybe think about the delivery aspect also of it. I did apply for a retail license and a delivery, but my retail license was denied, but I did get approved for my delivery. And so I was hoping to maybe set up something here in Burnsville, but I'm looking at different cities and to see, you know, how it goes. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for coming in.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? If there's anyone else, they're welcome to approach the podium and we'll check to see if there's anyone on Zoom. Nobody is on Zoom. And nobody else is approaching the podium. We will close the public hearing now at 7:12 and we'll move it back to commissioners for further discussion or a motion. Commissioner John?
I just got to ask, I've got a question. Are you working with other cities as a group or contingency to come up with best plan, best processes?
Yes, Commissioner. We have been reviewing other adjacent communities as well as part of this. A lot of the proposed language was drafted off other municipalities' language using the OMC and the communities around us, we usually talk and we all have, each state's kind of doing things a little differently. Apple Valley has a lot more, and Lakeville have a lot more in the Title III area on restricting licenses and stuff like that. Eagan's very similar to us in that perspective right now of, you know, kind of following the existing zoning code. So yes, we do kind of, you know.
Informally or is it a formal?
We kind of all talk.
Yeah.
Informally, but a lot of us are bound by state statute. So that's where, you know, state statute says the rules, what the rules are. So we're bound by that criteria. So, yes.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Is, since the buffer situation is still a conversational point, is there any way that that can, the aspect of buffer, be bounced back to us for discussion and consideration?
That's a good question, Commissioner. That's something I would have to check with our city attorney. My understanding is if you chose to do buffers for all cannabis uses, all, not just one or two or whatever, you would have to do it for daycares and all, but then we can address it in zoning. But if you're doing onesie, you know, like schools, for example, you must want to do schools, that has to live in Title III. And the direction we were provided by council was, not at this time, the buffers, however, now that, you know, we're just going to start drafting Title III, that's a conversation that you can have then. But it has to be an all or nothing kind of approach for zoning is what our city attorney advised us. To live in zoning, by the way, to live in the zoning code, it has to be all cannabis or not. So I'll just clarify that.
Thank you. If there's no, Commissioner Timmerman?
I would be proud to make a recommendation to the city council that the planning commission recommend approval of the proposed amendment as discussed and as on our screen. I do want to reiterate the, the concerns that Commissioner Hamilton and I and other commissioners at previous meetings have expressed. And I hope that the, the city council takes those under consideration. But I think that this is an exciting opportunity for some new economics within our city. So I, I do make this recommendation.
So just, and just to clarify, you're making a recommendation as it is?
As stated.
As stated, okay, thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
You know what? Commissioner Anderson had his hand up first.
Oh, jeez. But he didn't say it. I'll let it go. I'll let it go.
So there's a motion. It has been seconded. We'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is updates. And our next planning commission meeting is scheduled for December 9, 2024. And are there any updates from commissioners? None, seeing none. Are there any updates from staff?
Yep, one quick one. At the city council's last meeting on November 19, the city council approved Chick-fil-A's request for conditional, for amended PUD to expand their existing drive-through. That was approved at the last meeting and that's the only update I got.
Okay, great, thank you. The last item on our agenda is adjournment. I would entertain a motion that we adjourn.
I think we're just going to stay here.
Motion by Commissioner Hamilton.
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that. Let Commissioner Anderson have some, I want him to get involved. Okay, I want to be involved.
Motion is seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a nice evening and a nice Thanksgiving.
You too, sir.
Thank you.